15 minutes of our meeting to public comment and then we're going to move on with our business. Do you want to limit it to things that are on the agenda or things that are not on the agenda? That might be a time when you say to people, you know, this is your opportunity to notify us of the things that are important to you so that we can bring them up at a future meeting. Or, you know, you can have it just be sort of open public comment and then there's an inherent limitation that you can limit comment to matters that are within your jurisdiction. You know, as the select board, you know, you have much broader ranging authority, but, you know, if someone were to come to you with a matter that is, you know, clearly within the discretion of the school committee or the conservation commission, you could say, well, that's, this is not the appropriate forum for that. You have to go to one of those other bodies. Otherwise, you know, your policy, you know, can say that, you know, we expect people to act with a certain level of civility and decorum, but if they choose not to, that in and of itself is not a reason to deny them unless, of course, they're interrupting the meeting. So general rules of order still apply. Anybody who speaks has to speak through the chair. Anybody who's participating in the meeting has to follow the directions of the chair. And if someone is speaking out of turn, disrupting the meeting, you know, using hate speech, you know, racial slurs or things of that nature, you know, then the chair still does have the authority to maintain order and to remove a person like that. So I think that pretty much covers it. And do you have specific questions?
I know currently right now that we as a board, we do have a public comment policy in place. Last, yeah, we do. Last updated in 2015, I think, from your advice, Mr. Carbo, I think we should, in an upcoming meeting, definitely have a discussion about updating our public comment policy.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to take a look at that for you.
Okay, perfect.
It was like a one-page thing.
And then select my handle?
Yeah. Yeah. I thought we looked at it since. I thought we updated it.
I don't think we ever updated. I think we did just looked at it.
Oh, we looked at it and we kept, we kept it going.
Yeah.
We didn't have a revision date on it.
Yeah, it was June of 2015, I think, something like that.
No, yeah, I think we've looked at it on the board since then.
But just to clarify, so orderly and peaceful manner, like what, because you kind of touched a little bit on that before.
So, you know, orderly and peaceful manner means waiting your turn, you know, waiting to be recognized by the chair, not acting in a way that is threatening towards people or might incite others, you know, to act in a violent or dangerous way, right? So it's orderly, meaning you have to follow the directions of the, of the chair or the rules of the meeting, and peaceable, meaning you can't incite violence, but not necessarily courteous. So you're free to call people names, you know, if that's how you choose to express yourself.
Does that go for us too?
Yeah.
Nice.
Nice.
Oh, geez Louise.
It's gonna be a long year, Alex.
I know it.
Makes sense. I mean.
I mean, I don't think that this is really like a drastic change for most. I think, you know, and I think.
We've never had to kick anybody out of our meeting in the six years I've been here.
Yeah, no.
I think it's, I mean, I think just tightening up the language and maybe adding in some things, but healthy discussion.
I think this should, this should also be included when we do our boards and committees and commissions, open meeting law training that we do every year. This should probably be included.
With that. Yeah, and I haven't done any open meeting law trainings since this came out, but we would be incorporating this into any of the trainings that, that we give.
Okay. When did this come out, recently?
Yeah, it was just a few months ago.
So this, yeah, I'm sure this is going to be on the plate for most towns throughout the, yeah.
Yes, and I would imagine that we're going to start seeing people test the boundaries of it.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
There's the chair. Are you going to recognize members of the board?
Yes, 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 I will recognize. Any comments from the board? All right, comments from the public?
Doesn't apply to town meeting.
That's correct. Okay.
If you could repeat that.
You're gonna have to state your name and.
Say, say, state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Riley. I reside at 271 Dorsey Street. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I just wanted to, I read the case also, and I just wanted to note that that case does not apply to town meeting. Town meeting has its own laws, own separate rules that be basically, we don't have an open forum at town meeting. We speak only on what the articles are before the town meeting, and there already is laws in effect for town meeting that if anyone is acting in a disruptive way, then he can be, he or she can be removed. So what Attorney Coobal's talking about is for basically everything, all the public meetings other than town meeting. Right?
Yes, that's correct. Right. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
And that's just when public comment is recognized, correct? I mean, like if they're disrupting the meeting, when they're not recognized or doing anything else, we can still remove them.
That's right. And, you know, you're still, you know, you're here to do business. This isn't just an open, you know, forum for people to come and talk. And so, you know, if you say, okay, we're gonna have, you know, 10 to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for, for public comment, then that's it. That, you know, there is no further public comment. And, you know, if somebody speaks out of turn, then they are subject to removal by the chair. You know, obviously, we want to use that sparingly, and if it ever did come to that, I would suggest that you, you know, try to diffuse the situation first, take a recess, see if people will pull down, and, you know, if it becomes necessary, you know, invoke the assistance of the police department. Don't try to enforce on your own.
Thank you, Mr. Carbo.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions or comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the audience? All set. Thank you, Mr. Carbo.
Oh, you're welcome. Good to see you, everyone.
Good to see you as well.
Thanks. Good to see you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have public announcements, and I believe we have someone from Abington Celebrates here before us to give us an update on Founder's Day weekend. Please state your name and address.
Sure. I'm Michelle Coyle, 222 High Street, and I'm gonna hand out.
Can I have a promotional video last issue?
I apologize. I don't have a video or Mrs. Claus tonight. It's just me. I know Tim. I was gonna have him come and do some interpretive dance, but he said no and just decided not to come with me. So tonight, I'm the chair of Abington Celebrates. My name is Michelle Coyle. I'm here to talk about Founder's Day weekend with fireworks. The weekend is June 9th through 11th, which we hope everyone has marked their calendars for, as we have a full lineup of events for the whole family to enjoy once again. Starting Friday evening, June 9th, the United Church of Christ, UCC, in Abington is hosting its annual kickoff cookout. You can enjoy free food, raffles, and a historical exhibit. The UCC thrift shop will also be open with lots of bargains, and they'll also, they'll finish the night off with a music recital in the sanctuary. On June 10th, that's a fun-filled day from start to finish. In the morning is our annual kids fishing derby on Central Street. That's across from the Town Barn. Also at the Town Barn, PAC 41, we'll be hosting scoops for scouting with free ice cream. And the Girl Scouts will host Chalk It Up in the Abington Police Station parking lot, where you can try your hand at sidewalk chalk art. I think last year I saw a chalk drawing of Selectman Chapin.
It's a big drawing.
What's that?
So that's a big drawing.
Oh, see what they'll do this year. In the afternoon, head on over to the Dyer Memorial Library, where the Historical Society is hosting a special exhibits of local history. On Saturday evening, Memorial Field is definitely the place to be. You can join Abington Celebrates for family fun at Memorial Field from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM for food, music, games, and more. The music for the evening is sponsored by the Abington Summer Concerts, featuring the Baja Brothers. The highlight, of course, is the fireworks display at 9:00 PM by North Star Fireworks. We have a rain date of June 11th, but, so help me God, it better not rain that entire weekend. I will, I will get unruly. Anyway, Sunday morning, June 11th, the UCC will host Worship at Island Grove, and all are welcome. That afternoon, Abington Celebrates is hosting its first raffle, raffle fundraiser at Lucky's 777 Bar and Grill. To close out the weekend, there will be a Founder's Day concert featuring Abington Town Choir, Abington Community Band, and Island Grove Chorus. So for a full week, for a full event schedule, we ask folks to visit the town website at abbingtonma.gov or on Facebook and Instagram at Abington Celebrates. So we want to thank everyone for your support, donations, and love. Without these, our weekends and fireworks would just not be possible. So we'll see you all Founder's Day weekend.
All right. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you to the Abington Celebrates community.
No rain. Can't rain.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, and continuing public announcements from the board. Ms. Justburg, do you have any public announcements?
I do not.
All right. Mr. Demazio?
I have nothing.
Mr. Chapin?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that on Monday, May 29th, which is Memorial Day, the town of Abington will be hosting a Memorial Day ceremony at Mount Vernon Cemetery. The ceremony will focus on honoring the people from our town who have died while fighting for our freedom. The ceremony will be led by the veterans organizations in Abington. That's 9:00 AM in the veterans lot. Just please remember to enter off of Pearl Street, central, while Central Street's being worked on.
All right. Thank, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chapin. All right, and as usual, I do have public announcement. In celebration of Abington preserving over, over 90 acres of greenery, open space, and conservation land in the past couple of years, the Massachusetts Walking Tour will be touring the South Shore in Holbrook, Rockland, Whitman, and Abington on June 21st through June 24th, with, with a tour stop in Abington on Thursday, June 22nd. The Massachusetts Walking Tour is an annual grassroots bipedal concert tour of Massachusetts in support of arts and culture for towns throughout the state. Each free community concert collaborates with local artists, musicians, educational programs, trail managers, and land trust groups to highlight both artistic diversity and recreational land use. The concert again will be held on Thursday, June 22nd at 6:00 PM in the Abington Middle High School auditorium. If you are a musician, poet, storyteller, interpretive dancer, or other, maybe perhaps a Grinch, please contact Massachusetts Walking Tour at masswalkingtour@gmail.com. Solo artists or ensembles are welcome, actually. And then I did have one other thing that I received from our veterans agent. This Saturday, May 27th, Chris Schultz, the Troop 41 Scout Master, will take the lead again at the Abington Legion at 9:00 AM, where his scouts and volunteers will head to Mount Vernon and place 900-plus flags on veteran graves. All are welcome to join. That is all I have for public announcements. Next on our agenda is public comment. Seeing none. Next on our agenda, first action discussion item is vote to approve minutes of May 8th, 2023. I will, I will open the floor for, for Or if there's any, any changes that need to be made, or anyone, any, any comment from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, but I would like two changes to it. I don't know the exact language. I'm hoping that Nancy can maybe look back in the meeting and talk. Mr. Donovan had talked about language, about everyone having a chance to serve as chair and vice chair. I'd like that wording in there. And also, I talked about putting the MBTA representative out to the public, and I'd like that language in there as well. But that'll be my motion, add those two things, amend to this. Sorry, I don't have the exact wording.
No worries. So the motion is on the table for Mr. Demazio. Any, is there a second? A second?
No second.
Okay, there's a second. Are there any other motions to be heard? All right. Hearing none. Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes of May 8th, 2023 with the amendments that Mr. Demazio has provided. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Right, unanimous. Okay. Next on our agenda is Massachusetts Walking Tour requesting permission to camp at Island Grove on June 22nd. In your packet, you do have the, the form that Massachusetts Walking Tour did with the park and rec. And we also do have someone from the Massachusetts Walking Tour here with us. So if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us a little about yourself and what you're hoping to accomplish.
My name is Rayanne Richards. I reside at 790 School Street in Webster, Massachusetts. First of all, I just want to thank you for giving me two minutes of your time and even considering our request. We're looking to utilize your park as kind of a base camp for our four-day tour in your region. Its central location would allow us to have the opportunity to have sort of a spot where we can camp every night that's quiet and safe, and would allow us also to lighten our loads and our backpacks. We've done this tour for about 12 years. We've visited many different regions in Massachusetts. We've hiked on rail trails. We've hiked on backcountry trails like the Appalachian Trail. We've been, more recently in this area would be Bay Circuit Trail. We completed over two years. That comes like right through Hanson. And our concerts, as Alex was saying, typically gather sort of an overflow of the hiking community and the music community and just people who enjoy community in general. We tend to draw all different age groups. Same thing with our roster of performers. We try to pull local talent. We also have quite a large, you know, community we've built around what we're doing. And, you know, we don't discriminate. Any age is welcome. All skill levels are welcome. So we may have some where there are kids getting up and performing, and we may have some where there are older folks getting up and performing. In your case, we, we also really love to celebrate conservation of land and, you know, creating green spaces for people to enjoy. And we have friends here in Abington who have admired our project for years, and have basically begged us to come here, and it just seems like the perfect opportunity to do so. So with your permission, if we can have a few nights to, to do some leave no trace camping in your park, it would really, really help us make the rest of our tour easier. And essentially, we'd be, you know, just staying overnight there and then leaving each morning and going to wherever our group hike will be for the day, and then as well as our performance location, and then hoofing back. And we do, in fact, walk, in case there's any question of that. We are walking around, carrying our instruments and all of our backpacking gear, partially to be a spectacle and partially to just show people that this is really important to us, and to also encourage them to celebrate what you have here in your community as well.
Great. Any, any questions or comments from the board? I'll open it up.
No open fires?
We were not intending to have a fire, no.
Thank you. As you know, this is the only park in town that's closed at night, so that's why it's by special permit. But I was looking here, is this form from, like Kelly, is this from the town, or is this park and rec?
This is, yeah, park and rec.
So park and rec has this form. It just, there's no really title on it. I was just confused. Park and rec fills these out at their meetings?
Yeah, I believe she said.
As a member of park and rec, yes, we fill out those forms.
And this is actually something that we had reviewed a couple of years ago, and we worked with Kelly on this about.
Yeah, I've just never seen the form, actual form, before.
We've seen this recently with the Civil War reenactment. They filled this out for, for.
I don't think I was at that meeting.
Park and rec, park and rec approved the, the allowance for, for camping, and then it would come before us. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, the park and rec met having, with, with, with your allowance to camp on the ground. What were the results of that? Did they approve?
Kelly told me that it was approved. I, I just walked the property with her a few hours ago to scope out, you know, what would work for us, where we can have the most minimal impact, because I know they're getting the pool ready for use. And obviously, we don't want to be getting sprayed with pool water at 6:00 in the morning either. So I think we've come up with a good solution where we can really have a minimal impact there and still have a nice, quiet place to sleep.
So you're gonna be just one to two vehicles parked in there, not going in and out, just parking for the night?
Yeah, the vehicle's gonna be there for the duration, so we'll, we'll come in, we'll set up camp, and then we're not gonna use our car again until we leave Saturday morning.
And the other thing I see, access to bathroom facilities required. Is that gonna be, are you gonna have a bathroom, or are you accessing the town?
Yep. Yeah, no, Kelly, Kelly and I have already talked about her providing us with a key so that we can keep the bathroom secured, so that we will be the only people who have access to it aside from her staff. Because I don't, I don't think it's officially open until Saturday, right? So, yeah, we don't, we don't intend, like, it would just be our crew of five that would be able to get in there to use the bathroom, and that's it. We wouldn't be leaving it open during the day or anything like that.
Okay. Suzanne, you're on park and rec still, right?
I am on park and rec, so we voted on that.
So you voted on this already?
Yes.
On that committee? Okay.
And also, we, we arranged for Kelly to give the key for the bathrooms to have access. And I have to honestly say that I'm one of your neighbors.
Awesome.
And so I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the town of Abington to go out and see a lot of people. We have new people coming into our town who've never been to Island Grove.
Yeah.
So this is a great little opportunity.
Yeah, we've visited some communities even, like the town of Acton. They have a pretty large park now called Nara Park. And our troop, our troops have been giving permission in lots of places to camp in parks like yours. We've literally camped on the lawns of libraries before.
Yeah.
And again, you know, leave no trace, like, literally, you would not know we're there. There's no trash. There's no footprint of any kind, reusing really small backpacking tents. And in Acton, they actually now do a townwide campout in the park.
Oh, wow.
They thought what we were doing was so cool that they've now opened it to their community. So once a year, and they get usually a couple hundred families that will come.
That's cool.
For some kids, that's their first time being in a tent.
We're not even allowed in there after 7:00.
Yeah.
Yeah. We shut our park down after 7:00, the only one.
I mean, you do what you have to do to try to protect the space, you know?
Yeah.
And from talking to Kelly, like, she, you know, we're, we're prepared for whatever, but she didn't seem to think that we'd run into really any issues.
No, that's fine. I just had those questions. I, I just saw that, the access to the bathrooms. I didn't know if you were bringing a porta potty in or if you were using ours. I think it's a great event. I'm not against it whatsoever. I don't want you to think that either. I just, maybe a question, but because you voted on park and rec, can you vote here tonight? Is that a conflict, or does it, does it matter?
No, there's no conflict.
No conflict, so you can vote twice on it?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for driving out here, by the way, from Webster for like four minutes.
Well, I've actually been hanging up flyers in, in your town and in the surrounding towns all day, and it's a beautiful area. You guys are really lucky. I can't, I can't believe I'm this close to Boston, and it still feels like a really nice, tight-knit community.
Yeah.
And you have trees, and you can barely see the commuter rail.
It's not as many as we're used to.
Some people in town would say we don't, but we do have trees, yeah.
No, it's, it's really beautiful here. You guys are lucky, and we're really, really happy to just get to spend a few days. So thank you very much.
Thank you for picking us, our town, and, you know, bringing.
And I know, and I know as part of your concert, you're also doing a hike somewhere in Abington as well, at Ames Knoll.
Yep. Yeah, which I've heard mixed reviews about. So we'll see. But yeah, we love getting people on the trail. You know, on this project, we have a long-term goal of visiting every town in the Commonwealth. So you guys are helping us get there. After this year, we'll be at 135 of 351.
Wow.
Wow, very cool.
You do the math. I'm gonna be walking until I'm really old. Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Any other comments or questions from the board? Oh, Scott, because I did, in our packets here, we did see some, there was, Kelly, Kelly did ask the group to notify the police that they will be down and that all fires are permitted through the fire department.
Should I be like appearing? Sorry.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Would it be better for me to go in person to the police department? Should I call them? Should I email them?
Just dial 911. They like that.
Well, we'll notify them.
Okay.
That's for emergencies only, Tim. That's not a good idea.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, the night of, it may be okay to, if you just ring the office line.
Let them know that we're there. Yeah, we've typically done that in the past, too. And, you know, again, it's just a good, it's good for everyone. You know, they don't need to roll up on a bunch of hippies tenting in the park, not knowing what's going on.
I guess, I mean, Kelly has it, but it'd be nice, too, if you made contact. That way, at least they have a contact person, a name.
Yep.
In case they need to call you if any issues.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Awesome.
And hopefully, we don't need them, and they don't need us.
I just have one question, not for you, but maybe Suzanne, you can answer. When they, when they do these type of events, do we normally open up the bathrooms for there, or are we requiring them to bring that porta potties in?
I haven't seen any porta potties come in. We're really kind of like, this event is a little different. I know the Boy Scouts were there in the past, and they do there overnight. I'm not sure if they're gonna do it this year.
Yeah.
But I believe Kelly did give keys to them. But they, I don't think that we've ever had open fires on any event in Island Grove. It's just not.
The Civil War came in, maybe, is the only one, probably.
Yeah, that's, and it was, I think, maybe two.
Yeah.
Two little fires, but other than that, no.
Yeah, we don't really have a need for that. I don't want the responsibility of it either.
Definitely.
All right. And looking at the application, it's for, it's for June 21st, the 22nd, and the 23rd evenings and early mornings, correct?
Yep. Yeah, so we would, we're actually gonna, we'll vacate, sorry.
Sorry, my bad.
We will vacate the property on the morning of June 24th.
Okay.
And I know that's your opening day. So I had talked to Kelly about having our vehicle, you know, out in public parking, and I think we're actually gonna end up leaving it down in, in Rockland anyway. So our van, all of our stuff will be gone, long before anybody's coming in there to celebrate in the park.
Scott, I would just say to the police, get the license plate of the van. I know that people will look and say, oh, my gosh, there's a van, and it's been there for a couple of days. So just to give the police a heads up.
Yep.
Good plan.
You know, you know that, that story.
I'll make a motion that we grant permission for the Massachusetts Walking Tour to camp at Island Grove on June 21st, 22nd, and 23rd morning.
All right. I'll second that motion. All right, Tim makes the motion. I second. Any other discussion?
You said you vacate in the morning of June 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll change my motion.
All amended. All right, and I'll, I'll second your amendment. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous? Congratulations. Can't wait for the concert.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, perfect. All right. Next on our, next item on our agenda is notice of application period for town boards, committees, commissions, and appointments. I asked Scott to put this on our agenda. I sent, I gave to each of you a list of the appointments that are up in 2023, or the expiring appointments, I should say. I just want.
This packet? I didn't get it.
He handed it to us.
He just handed it out.
Let me see if I have.
Maybe I'll take Scott's.
My apologies.
Sorry. Go take it personally.
Okay. Good. I just wanted to, just for the sake of, for our residents and our board, so the expiring appointments, I won't go through all the names, but we have the Abington Affordable Housing, that, Abington Affordable Housing, there are two positions. The Abington Cultural Council, there are three positions. The Abington Summer Concerts, two positions. Commission on Disabilities, two positions. Community Preservation, two positions. Conservation Commission, three positions. Council on Aging, two positions. Griffins Dairy Committee, four positions. Historical Commission, one, one position. Park and Rec, one position. Register of Voters, one position. Strawberry Valley Golf Course Committee, one position. Veterans Memorial Trustees, two positions. And Zoning Board of Appeals, one position. And additionally, they're still on the town website, two for Cable Advisory Committee. And additionally, they're still on the town website, two for Cable Advisory Committee, one for Charter Review Committee, one for Open Space, and for the newly formed Veterans Advisory Committee, there are still five open positions. I believe all of these positions were posted on Friday, so they've been on the town website. Residents have, is it, is it 10 or 14 days? No, it's, the posting has to be up for 14 days, and resident, oh, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I mean, this is different than the posting for the water and sewer vacancy.
Oh, correct, my, my apologies, I was getting that confused.
But these ones, they are up on the website, and we typically need them the Wednesday before your meeting, which I think we looked at was going to be.
So the June 8th or something? That's a meeting, sorry.
Yeah. I think it is June 8th, it'd be the.
June 8th is a Thursday, so June 7th?
June 7th, so.
Wednesday, June 7th.
We'll, we'll post that up here, too, that these are, are due by then, but they're all, if anybody was looking, on the website, scroll right down to the bottom, and you'll see Volunteer Boards and Committees Vacancies right here, and then the other vacancy that has been up, this Water and Sewer Commission, there's a vacancy on each one, I'm going to mention that in my report.
Okay.
But you'll see that they're in there, and anybody wishing to volunteer to be on either of those committees, they do have a deadline, 10 days from, we posted it on the 18th, so 10 days following that, so they have till the end of day on the 28th.
Okay.
To get something in.
What exactly is the end of day?
The end of the day.
Yeah, what, like, what is that?
4:30.
4:30, okay.
It's a Thursday.
I would think it's like 11:59 PM.
If they emailed it to me.
Tomato, tomato.
Tomato, tomato.
Okay, just checking, 4:30 is?
I would recommend that people don't procrastinate on this, if they're interested, and try and get it in a timely manner. But we have put this out on social media, we will again post this, just to remind everybody that, that, you know, that these are up, we've already started receiving some folks that want to be reappointed.
Excellent.
So that's good. Nancy does send something out to everybody who's already on, just to see if they do want to be reappointed, so.
And what is the, what is the deadline? So ideally, we, we'd vote on these reappointments or appointments on, at our next meeting on June 12th. What would be the, just repeating, what would be the deadline for that?
Wednesday, June 7th.
Wednesday, June 7th.
End of day, 4:30.
Okay.
End of day, 4:30.
All right, thank you. All right. As part of, as part of the, just the application period, I did want to say that I did, I was invited to go to the Charter Review Committee last Thursday by the chair. Just ask, the Charter Review Commission wanted to get some input from us as a board, particularly for Charter Review regarding budget process and appointment policies. Obviously, I cannot speak for the board as a whole, because we did not have a, a written consensus from all of us to specifically about the budget process and appointments. So for the, for future meetings, I will bring that for an agenda item, that for us to talk about, if there is any input that we want to give officially from us to the Charter Review, what we would like to see, and then we can pass that along to the Charter Review, if that is all right with the board.
You put it on the agenda?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, perfect. And also, in pertaining to boards and committees, I believe, were there two resignations from the Opioid Reallocation Committee? Or is it one?
I'm only aware of, of the one, Alex Bezanson. But we did not post that, and I don't know that it makes any sense to post it and replace it. We have, actually, that leaves us with seven people on the committee, which is kind of a nice number, I think, keeping it status quo as we had planned until the end of the year, or until a year is up for, by this time next year, to kind of give every, give this board an update on what the committee's done, what we, how we think that the committee should be made up in the future, whether it should be a mix of certain department heads and, and citizens at large, or all citizens and voters. I think we had decided we'd have a year to figure that out, so I would recommend we just keep it the way it is right now.
Out of curiosity, how many are on the commission right now that are department heads?
Three.
Okay.
So we have Veteran Services Officer, which I think makes sense to have the Veteran Services Officer, we have our Public Health Nurse, again, makes sense, and we have our Senior Senate Director.
Okay.
Which, again, these are folks that are more likely to be in touch with the vulnerable population that is going to be affected by this, so I think that they're, you know, uniquely suited to help us with this committee. And then we do have a, Brian Feely, who is actually on here as a resident, but he is a Abington Police Officer. Rick Collins is on it, Pete Walters, and I'm sorry, I forget, we, we had just appointed someone recently who's also a teacher in the school system. Again, they were all put on as residents.
Okay.
But it's a very good makeup, they've made quite a bit of headway as far as mission statement, organization, kind of getting an idea of what their purpose is. We're actually going to ask Attorney Corbo to join in with their next meeting, to give them an idea on, on how the funds actually by the statute can be allocated, and I think you'll probably see something either at the special town meeting or at the annual town meeting, where we set up a fund account, and then, you know, how we're going to move money from into that fund account that can be expended. So, they're making good progress, we'll have an update well before then for you, though, to get it.
All right. Personally, I'd like to see this committee go up to nine, just to, and my reasoning for it is, with the Finance Committee being nine, and this being a financial aspect of the town, I, I would like this to, to go up to nine.
It's a lot smaller numbers they're dealing with in the Finance Committee.
I, I mean, it could be nine, we just have, we could also talk about non-voting members and stuff like that, associate members or whatnot.
I think seven's too many, I think we keep it simple.
Yeah.
As simple as possible, it's been kind of confusing from the start. I like Scott's idea to keep it at seven.
And certainly, the intention all along was to revisit it.
One year.
Yeah, revisit it, too, I mean, again, the department heads could also transition.
After one year, and, yeah, I mean, you know, it may be that, I, I think it's very important that at least those three, and really, it's by position, we just happen to, you know, be lucky enough to have great people in all three of those positions, but those positions should be a part of this committee going forward. This committee should be around for quite some time, I think we have 25 to 30 years of payments that we're going to be dealing with, so, again, it is more of the, the positions that are, like, again, are, are more likely to have contact with vulnerable members of the community that are going to need these services. But right now, you know, I think it, it's good, it's moving, and, again, we'll be here 11 months from now, reviewing it and discussing it, and how, that was the plan all along, was to discuss how the makeup was going to be with the term, term, we're going to be and stuff like that. And then, at that point, maybe, maybe you keep the department heads on, and you make them non-voting, I don't know, it's, again, I think, a discussion another day.
Looks like we'll talk about it then.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is discussion of reestablishing the Sage Committee. Scott, you and I had talked about this, this was Abington, Saving Abington Green Energy Committee, I don't believe it's been active for, for, for quite some time, but I think with the aggregation plan that we're, that we work with, the energy source, and also just the involvement from the town about, about our environment and our greenery and our spaces and, you know, conservation, conservation land, I think this would be a worthwhile thing to reestablish.
I, I agree, and, and I think I'll probably just sort of segue that into the Town Managers' Report, because they, it's really, one of the, one of the things that we've been working on, I know Liz Shea has been here probably once or twice on this already, is this Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program? And so we've had a group together working on hazard mitigation and, and that sort of part one of this, and anyways, if we can, if we can get within, into this program, in, you know, the, it provides support for communities of Massachusetts to identify climate hazards, assess the vulnerabilities of, of the, that we have, and then improve resilience. So if we complete this process, we're actually eligible for more grants, and, so Liz has been working on this, but one of the requirements of this MVP program is that we, we put together a committee, and, and one of the sort of things that that committee would do sort of overlap with the, what a Sage Committee does. And I think another one of the conversations that we've had quite frequently is, is, you know, what are we doing with our, the burden of, of trash hauling and, and waste hauling, and the ever-growing expense of that, and trying to get the community more interested in different ways to save on that. So that, again, was part of the, the goals and duties of Sage, supporting and promoting, reduce, reuse, recycle, repurpose. That also, you know, going along with community or environmental awareness, which would be part of the MVP program, I think that it would be good, as we had discussed and as you'd recommend, that we, we bring the Sage back, but we, we increase sort of what their, what their role is to include anything that's in the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. A lot of it won't change, I mean, we've already, the, so what I, I think I handed out to you sort of what was in the goals from the charter, and the first thing that they had to do was obtain the Green Community Status, which they did, and I think that happened in pretty much every community that became a green community, that they had to do this and put this Sage-type group together, but it ended up in our charter, and that was probably a requirement, so the charter still calls for this committee to exist, so we should establish it, and we should just sort of maybe expand on the mission, and if we feel as though that requires charter change, well, now's the time to do that, because we're going through that review. But again, as you can see, you know, it is developing strategies for the town and municipal operations to reduce overall energy consumption, pursue grant opportunities, federal, state, private, support, promote, reduce, reuse, recycle, repurpose, and, and then it says any and all activities within the mission of Sage, well, that, you know, we can tweak that mission, and I think that that will work with what we need for this MVP, which, again, is looking, you know, really for resilience to climate change, so, and those are things like, you know, tree canopy is, is a big thing. You can see where, we, we've been in, we're part of a new grant opportunity that we got through Liz, that will heat index the area, and, and basically, they're looking at different communities, and they could come in and say, well, this is what's happening within your community, and where we have a great tree canopy, you'll probably find that it's significantly cooler in those areas than any areas that have been cleared. So there, there's some really good information coming out of that, but that's also information that we can use going forward when we look at developments, whether they're large or small, and how we want to deal with them, and when we think, or not, you know, that we need more trees, less trees, or really just thoughtful development, so. I highly recommend that we go forward with this, I think we want to talk with a Charter Review, or I'll talk with them, as far as whether, you know, that's necessitated by this, and then I'll get some idea from Liz on exactly what the MVP can be, and if we can put them together, as long as it's not going to make any head, any problems with us with the MVP grant.
Yeah.
So, but I think it is time that we reestablish that, there's a lot of, you know, projects, we're trying to put the trail in, we want to connect, you know, from one side of Abington to the other, through trails, bike paths, stuff like that, so I think that this could all be part of that. And we do have EV charging stations, which they would be a great advocate for. So that's it for that.
Would, would you need a vote for us to do that tonight?
No, I think it's something, I think we want to continue on the agenda and continue talking about, I think we want to work towards getting it together, and I think now's time to see if we can get some more interest. I know, Kevin, you were on the committee when it.
I was going to say, I won't be as long-winded as you were, but I was on the committee four to five years ago, you know, it's a great committee, I think it's good to get it back together, and, I don't know if we even need to reestablish it, I think it's still there, but.
Yeah, I think technically it's there, I think we have to refill it, I guess, but I would like, I do think we might have to tweak the mission.
Yeah, so, yeah.
If that has to be charter change.
I would, yeah, I would defer to you to take it from here and bring it back to us.
Sounds good.
All right. Continuing with the Town Managers' Report.
Yeah, so paving, paving work still goes on on 139, let's not forget that it's overnight, they, they pretty much think through with the grinding, but you'll see that they're working on accessibility to the sidewalk, so that's still going to go on for a little bit, mostly overnight, so be prepared. And as a reminder, from the recent election, still have two open elected positions on two boards, the Water and Sewer Commission, those vacancies have been announced, they are on the website, and any individual who's interested in filling either of these vacant positions can submit their applications to the board before the end of the day on May 18th, 4:30 each.
That's already passed.
Oh.
That's when it was posted?
May 28th.
Are you extending it?
Right, no, May 20, no, 28th.
No, so 10 days after.
10 days after. So, beyond that, the following is a message from Abington Public Health Nurse, Lindsay Wright. With the ending of the Public Health Emergency Declaration having occurred on May 11th, 2023, we want to take a moment to reflect as we move forward from a pandemic state of COVID-19 into an endemic state. The ending of the Public Health Emergency does not end transmissibility of the virus itself, it does, however, change the data reporting structure on a national level, and it also changes the funding available for a coordinated nationwide response. The Abington Health Department is committed to continuing to keep our residents informed and safe, we will continue to offer at-home test kits, plenty of them downstairs, and COVID-19 vaccines to residents, and are always available to answer any questions that may arise.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, any, any comments or questions from the board? All right, I will entertain a motion, actually, before, actually, before I entertain a motion, I just want, again, I want to say thank you, as I started with my public announcements, thank you to the Massachusetts Walking Tour for bringing their concert to Abington, again, on June 22nd, at the Abington Middle School, High School Auditorium, as we were saying before, we have, we have done so much in this town to help preserve open space, conservation land, and Abington Greenery this, these past few years, and this is a great way for the community to come together and to celebrate the work that we've done and that we will continue to do. And, and also, you know, as Scott was mentioning before, you know, trails and connecting, the, the, oh, I know what the clip, I forgot that, but, you know, a town, a town forest, and also preserving conservation at Union Point, as the Southfield Redevelopment Authority has laid out, so I'm very, very excited, and thanks, so I just want to say thank you to you, Scott, to the School Department, to Massachusetts Walking Tour, the DPW, the Park and Rec, and all of us here, for all of our efforts that we've done to support open space and conservation. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, the mosquito.
Second.
The mosquito.
Oh, oh.
Whatever.
Hold on, one thing.
There's a motion on the floor.
Was it, actually, I can, I kind of technically have to take the motion first.
That's fine, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all right, but I'm.
What did I miss?
No, the.
There was a motion in a second.
There was a motion in a second, I will keep it open for discussion.
Oh, I revoke my motion.
Okay, thank you. There was, I, we did receive something from the Health Department, let me see, my packet's here. Here we go. All right. Um, please be advised, the Plymouth County, uh, Mosquito Control Project, uh, will begin truck-based, uh, adult side applications on June 5th, 2023 through October, 2023. Spring is conducted between 2:00 AM and sunrise, uh, Monday through Friday. Plymouth County residents may request spraying of their own area by phone at 781-585-5450. Um, all, or by fax, uh, 781-8, uh, no, excuse it, 781-585-1276. Drop off or by mail at 272 South Meadow Road, Plymouth, Massachusetts. Again, the, the Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project Office will be open from Monday through Friday between hours of 7:00 AM and 2:30 PM if you have any questions or concern. Okay, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. The time being 7:27, I call the Board of Selectmen Meeting of May 22nd, adjourned.